I'd like to call this Celine City Council Meeting to order. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Gearbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, business ambassador Korfman, technology support coordinator Schonk, and our DPW director, Mr. Fordyce. For the rest of you who are present this evening, if you'd please sign in the back, we would appreciate that. You do have two supplementals at your seat this evening. One is a traffic control order dated May the, actually, maybe it doesn't have a date on it. The 12th, excuse me. The date of filing is May the 12th, 2015. This is slightly different from the one that was included in your packet. There are a few additional streets. And then second is a resolution. And the only change in the resolution is the date in the last line of the third, now therefore let it be resolved, the date changed from, I believe, May the 15th to May the 22nd. So unless there are questions or unless there are amendments to the agenda, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as distributed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no citizen, or there, excuse me, there are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that. There are citizens present, there may be some comments. And we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Mary Hess, and I'm talking about the specific item of the sidewalks. I was in Friday, and I gave Mr. Campbell some information that I was hoping to give to the council, and I tried to see him, he called me, he said, "It's 4:45." It is regarding sidewalks and a letter, and hopefully whoever received it, from two years ago, April 1st, 2012, and was submitted April 1st, 2013. And there also is a letter from your candidates. It's regarding the big release repair shop. It appears that there are unlicensed cars, there are cars for sale. There is a terrible, as the letter stipulated, a concern, the ordinances that have not been heard of, which is regarding the sidewalks. And I have these sections, and I would like to, I noticed that the one sidewalk that was 12th, they didn't fix, which is great. And this is two, over two years, and I'm hoping that the approach can be fixed, and also make part of the baddest improvements to the street. We had a fire, we had a fire truck stop at the Crescent Ridge School this last week, and the fire trucks, I would hope, they would be able to get down and reach to go to Canterbury, which I know, rather than going down to Oak Creek. And I'm hoping that these letters can be given to all council members.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any other citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve and submit.
Mr. Roth, yes?
I'd like to have C-1591 and 92 removed for further discussion.
All right.
And then let's also say C-14, 123s, the topics are, or all three are the same topic.
Okay. They will all appear then as the first three items under new business. So Mr. Roth has removed the last three items from the consent agenda. Mr. Rhodes, would you like to offer a motion now to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Cybo Koenig. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the first action item of the evening, which is a public hearing. This is item 15-93. This is a special assessment for fire protection for fiscal year 2015-2016. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved?
Moved by Gearbaugh to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Cybo Koenig. All those in favor of opening the public hearing at 7:45 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The public hearing is now open, affording anyone from the public an opportunity to speak. Are there any comments from the public?
Move to close.
Second. It's been properly moved by councilwoman Cybo Koenig and seconded by council member Gearbaugh to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The public hearing is closed at 7:46 PM. The third motion will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt resolution number two, special assessment for fire protection 2015-2016, approving the estimated amount in, the estimated amount of, excuse me, I apologize, $341,773 for fire protection for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Roth. Is there any discussion? Well, I know I'm a broken record on this particular subject, but I feel compelled to comment as a longtime member of the Fire Board and actually as the current chair of the Celine Area Fire Board. Needless to say, if we had to administer and fund a fire department on our own, it would cost a significant amount more than $341,773. And I think I speak for all my colleagues and all of the citizens of this great community when I say that our department is exceptionally well-led and has a great group of dedicated staff members. And so we're very lucky to be serviced by them, and it goes without saying that I enthusiastically support the motion that's been moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Roth. Is there any subsequent discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving and adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business. The first item is C-15-91. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 13th memo from deputy treasurer McDonough regarding the fiscal year '16 LDFA-1 budget, Shelton Industrial Park, and the fiscal year '16 LDFA-2 budget, Sauk Trail Business Park, and to approve and adopt the fiscal year '16 LDFA-1 and LDFA-2 budgets as submitted.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Gearbaugh. Mr., or councilmember Roth, did you have a question?
Yeah, my discussion item, the one I wanted to bring up for discussion, it says continuation of approved projects. And I look at this, monies that come in under these different categories, as really being taxpayers' money. It should go almost into the general fund, but it's treated kind of separately. And projects are funded pretty much through these committees, and it doesn't say what they are when we look at the approved budget. And the only say the council has is by approving a budget. So I just want to say, want to caution, that according to my concept of how this money works, it's kind of like it happens without the council's approval. Our only approval is approving a budget. And going ahead, looking toward the future far, especially spending nearly $300,000 or more for the Merchant Park, which is on private property, and monies coming out of these funds, I think is kind of misappropriate, not doing the due diligence of taxpayers' monies. That's the item I wanted to bring up.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment?
Sure. The Tifa funds, the Tifa plan is that, it's the same within these different Tifa and the LDFA, and economics is a little bit different. But it doesn't, the agreement is that any, the units have agreed to capture said amount, and, or let's just use the example, the Tifa is up to 40% of the taxable capture value on that parcel, to use for improvements to those said areas. These boards are made up of representatives from each person in those, representing those units. So it's not, it is taxpayers' money, absolutely, all taxes are taxpayers' money, but the board that are authorized these, bring them to you for final say. You do have final say on all these projects. And the projects, as listed, are shown and wrote down, and the matching source is always in the general fund, or the street, or in the other budget that you also approve. The continuing funds, hold on a minute, per the agreement that we have with the other units, who are the board members that help make up that fund, that is, they stay there until said time that if there is a need, and that we can use those funds accordingly, the ones that needs the plan, documents, all those agreements met on. So the board that is approving this and sending it to you for recommendations to approve are all members that make up those local units that are also tax, that we're capturing those tax dollars from. So this money is captured from Celine Area Schools, and just the private and Washlaw County, and Washington Community College, and the Intermodal District. It's not just city of Celine's money, it's all of those units, and all of those units are represented on these boards. So just a little background information on how that is. So the continuing funds are reserved, and then each year, we approach those boards who represent those units, and then we also have the city council approve it. So they're recommending a budget to use for all of your board.
Any subsequent discussion or comments? While... Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
I'm just, the reason why I supported this movement, as I do every time, the Sauk Trail, the LDFA's, basically, those funds are reinvested within those industrial parks themselves. So it's really trying to help maintain the roads, the streets, the sewers, whatever else within those. So that money is not necessarily spent for other projects, and I do agree with Mr. Roth in the case of what we spend our Tifa on, we have to be more objective and more consideration taken by council. But in this case, I think the LDFA's are pretty straightforward, and so the funds that are there are used to support those operations, to keep them viable.
Mr. Roth, did you have a comment?
Yes, this way, it's listed here, it says committed continuing projects. Now that, I'd like to have further breakdown, instead of just a kind of card blank, we approve it.
Those are projects that we don't have at this time. So each year, when we do the budget process, we look at what the needs are in those parks. So that money is reserved, and if there's nothing, we do at the end of the fiscal year, any money that isn't, we don't have a project identified, and that we haven't used, we do return that money back to the units, to put it back towards their government, which is, I mean, it's all bringing in the taxes.
If, well, what I'm looking for is, as far as my far, is contributions from Merchant Park, that type of stuff. Is that spelled out, is that separate then, when we look at this?
LDFA. Okay. Right. And to be clear, councilmember Roth, the proposed improvements to Merchant Park would be coming out of Tifa, not LDFA-1 or LDFA-2.
Okay. I say it concerned all three, whereas committed. But I still, I still feel strongly that these type of arrangements that they have is kind of some way help, or taking away for some projects that the taxpayers funding, that should maybe, you know, kind of diverting the council, other than it's just, okay, we approve a budget.
Anything further?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Gearbaugh, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to C-15-92. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 13th, 2015 memo from deputy treasurer McDonough regarding fiscal year '16 Tifa budget, and to approve and adopt the 2016 Tifa budget as submitted.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cybo Koenig. I'll get you on the next one, councilwoman Dillon. Any discussion or comments? Mr. Gearbaugh.
As Mr. Roth had mentioned, I too am kind of concerned at the price tag, that's for merchant price, and after discussion tonight, I know we've identified it in here, but we have yet to approve any contract or any type of final cost for that. So at this point, it's just a place marker. But again, I agree that we need to look at how we are and what we are going to be spending on that improvement. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just to reiterate, that will be a discussion item that I will be looking for consensus on at our next meeting on June the 1st. Anything further? No, then it's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Cybo Koenig, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The third motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May, the May, 2015 memo from deputy treasurer McDonough regarding the third amended FY '15 Tifa budget, and to approve and adopt the third amended FY '15 Tifa budget as submitted.
So moved?
To approve and adopt, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving and adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-94. This is Public Works Access Control Upgrade. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated May the 7th, 2015, from technology support coordinator Schonk, and to approve, to approve or not to approve, the personnel-controlled entry into various city buildings and sensitive areas, and to authorize or not authorize the bid for Camtronics in the amount of $4,991.76.
Move to approve and authorize.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Schonk, do you care to make any comments, sir?
So just to kind of go over the further details of the memo a little bit, so, right now, our city hall location, we have Fox, we have E-Pox to get into access control. So what this would do, expand our current system at city hall to our Public Works Building. So right now, the current separate system, there's just duplicates work, so if you hire somebody, they have access in here, they have access in there. It just takes a lot of time, so this will merge the two systems, we'll have one place to get access, one log, a tree everywhere, so it'll be a lot.
Questions? Mr. Gearbaugh.
What's the capability of expanding it to other buildings?
It would support every building potential.
And any idea what a kind of a cost? I'm thinking the farm, the depot, anything else?
It's really site-specific. I could, we could look into that, what each building costs. I mean, you know, DPW's already got the doors in place, so we're just really ripping out kind of simple, not the guts, and the backend, upgrading them. So that's where there's some price going from, but, you know, we need probably something more to add, or, you know.
I didn't know how it was, whether it was just upgrading the lock system and such, or if it was the actual other parts of it, so, okay. But it'd be nice to have everything consistent, so we didn't have to...
Can we stick on that question for just a moment? Because I know we've discussed this casually at past meetings. I would be in favor of having an assessment done on the Depot Museum and Renshaw Farm. Not saying I'm beholden to expending the resources to make it happen, but I'd like to see an assessment done on those two sites. And I guess I would encourage staff to proceed in that direction unless there are objections from the dais. Mr. Rhodes?
Not an objection, but just a question with respect to Renshaw Farm. Would it be just the farmhouse, or would it include all of the other buildings that are on that site?
Mr. Gearbaugh, what would your thoughts be?
I mean, we just need to improve, just like we're doing here, we just need to improve what we have as security and make it concerned. I think it's more the issues probably where we would be storing any kind of exhibits, or things that potentially could be taken, which, multiple buildings, so we may need to look at some of the other buildings, yeah. But not necessarily the one open sheds, or some of those things where the animals are, so I mean, if somebody steals a chicken, we'll replace a chicken.
All right. So maybe we can do an analysis then on those properties as well. I'm not hearing any objections. Very good. I'm sorry to digress. Mr. Gearbaugh, did you have any additional questions, sir?
No, that was just it.
Okay. Any other questions from the dais? Mr. Schonk, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any subsequent discussion? Well, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The next business item is 15-95. This is Target Market Analysis Memorandum of Understanding. This is a series of two motions. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated May the 7th, 2015, from business ambassador Korfman, and to approve or not to approve the Target Market Analysis Memorandum of Understanding, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Is there a motion?
I'll move to acknowledge the memo.
Okay. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge the memo dated May the 7th, 2015. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Roth. Ms. Korfman, do you care to comment? And then we'll open it up for questions.
As part of our target market analysis application, we applied for up to a 50% match from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, which we did receive. And Mischta, they highly recommend that we do a memorandum of understanding so that it protects our community in case one of the other partner communities doesn't follow through with their part of the grant that we're not left paying for their expense.
Very good. There are questions for Ms. Korfman? No? Okay. Well, then let's proceed to vote then on Mr. Gearb, oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Rhodes.
No, I just have some comments, not necessarily questions.
Well, do you want to articulate those comments now, or do you want to articulate them at a subsequent motion?
Take them now, I think.
I think, take them now, because it might influence some things.
Yep, the floor is yours.
There are three locations that were mentioned for the city of Celine to be included in this target market evaluation. And one of those, we already have the developer identified, and that process is moving forward, so there, there's no need to do a target market analysis on that site. One of the other sites, the one on Maple, there's some interest from someone, and again, I don't think we need to spend our money to do a target market analysis. Third site, I don't know about that one yet, but I don't, I think we should leave it up to the market, and let the developer who is interested in putting their funds into that site decide what kind of housing they want to put on that site, rather than for us to tell somebody. And then the other concern that I had is if we don't do something within three years, that we've got to repay some money. And so I, I was interested in this when it first came up to us last year, but at present time, based on what I understand of it and what I see here, I don't wish to support any of it.
Okay. Do you care to comment at all?
We can take off one of those options that we had on there. That was just what we were putting on the table, so to speak, at that time, but our, and it's in the proposal that we received, but we can change that to add or subtract, or however we want to do that.
I don't know of any other sites within the city that we would add, so we're left with one site. And, I don't know, I hate to say here to developer, here's what you need to build on that site. So, anyway, that's my thought.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment, sir?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a couple of quick reminders, because it has been a protracted amount of time since this came before you all. I'm just a couple of things, that this, through Mischta, you may recall, when communities have these total market analysis completed, that essentially gives them points, if you will, for potential development using Mischta funds down the road. And then also, as far as the, the two additional locations, 207 Monroe and 600 Maple, that, again, since time passed, right, before, when those were directed to be included, we didn't have any interest at that point. But even having said that, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, is that I believe they included those and no additional charge.
Correct.
So even if we took them out, it would be the same, the same cost, is all.
What if we didn't do anything?
I'm sorry?
What if we don't do anything?
Well, then, then we would step out, and then they would have, those three communities would, would have to absorb us not being part of it.
Yeah, see, I, I don't know, I'm a bit concerned about spending $5,000 for target market analysis of one site, when I don't know if that's going to apply to a future development or not, anyway.
Well, we can broaden what we're doing, so it doesn't have to be just one site. We could say the whole city, or we could say that site plus part of the city. And it's up to us to tell them what we want them to target.
But at this point in time, we're not committed to participation at all, right? We just say we were...
We received the grant agreement, and this memorandum of understanding we need to sign. So if we decide to back out, then we need to let the city of Dexter know and proceed from there.
There's no ramification. Right, yeah. Councilmember Gearbaugh?
I agree with Mr. Rhodes in terms of potentially looking at one site, but I'm not convinced that the other two sites are deadlocked into what potentially could happen to them, because there are a significant amount of hoops and things that are going to have to be jumped through. So I see no problem going forward with this to continue, as, and the fact is, we've already kind of agreed with the other three communities that we were going to move forward on this, but also I think this target analysis would potentially be more focused to try and get Michigan Avenue done, especially now with the construction and everything happening. So from my perspective, I still think all three properties should still be considered.
Additional comments? Well, let me just say this, and then we'll proceed to vote on the first motion and see if there's desire to offer a subsequent motion. I'm really ambivalent on this, and I use that word deliberately. I can concur with councilmember Rhodes to a point. I think that the first property, our listing on Monroe Street, one could make a legitimate argument to remove that from consideration. However, I agree with councilmember Gearbaugh, at least as it relates to the Maple Road property, that although we have one individual who's shown some interest of late, I'm not as confident that something tangible will, will transpire in the near future. So I can see this both ways, but I certainly would have no hesitation dropping the first property while continuing to include the, the second and third. Mr. Roth?
I'm looking at far as the market, target market analysis, if there's four partners or three partners, data was provided, forth and such. If we go four partners, it's going to cost the city of Celine $8,000, regardless of how many parcels we're looking at. I think that since we got a realtor, realtor should also do marketing analysis. That person's supposed to market it for us, and I think, I concur with Mr. Rhodes, I think we need not spend this $8,000, our match, to be a part of the group. So I think it should go as three partners and without Celine.
The $8,000 was based on a proposal of $35,000. We received one for $30,000, so that $8,000 will drop. Plus, the grant pays for half of our cost. So you're looking about $3,500, that would come out of pocket for us.
Well, what information you provide for is definitely an error.
Well, that was an estimate before we received the proposal, so...
Well, tonight's tonight, and you had the proposal, so it's not up to either.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it is. Anything further? Ms. Tahar?
I don't, I guess the Monroe Street property, although planning is moving forward, and, and there's definite intent expressed, nothing is finished until it's finished. And that is a property with some challenges, as we've seen. So I, if there's no additional cost, I don't see any reason to pull it out.
Anything further? All right, well, let's proceed with the, the first motion, which was moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Roth, to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated May the 7th, 2015. Actually, we'll, we'll extend it unless there's objections from councilmember Gearbaugh to Mr. Roth. This is my mistake. The motion should really be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated May the 7th, 2015, from business ambassador Korfman. You comfortable with that, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Mr. Roth, you're okay with that?
Yes.
My apologies. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Next, the chair will entertain a motion to approve or not to approve the Target Market Analysis Memorandum of Understanding, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Move to approve.
Thank you, councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tahar. Discussion? No discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Just one nay? Okay. Okay. The second motion, motion B, will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated May the 7th, the memo dated May the 7th, 2015, from Business Ambassador Corkman, and to approve or not to approve the target market analysis project proposal as submitted.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Any discussion? No discussion. Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries. We move on to new business item 15-96. This is Little Free Libraries. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated May the 12th, 2015, from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the installation of Little Free Library boxes in Celine.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Ms. Scruggs, would you care to comment at all?
I'm inviting Ms. Cameron to the podium with me as well. This is her idea. This is Ms. Cameron. She approached us to the park commission and made a very compelling proposal to install these free library boxes. And I don't know if you've seen them. We have three of them in Celine. One at your house on Detroit Street, one by McNaughton &amp; Gunn, and another one on Hall Street by The Labyrinth. And essentially, it's, it's a, just a box that is waterproof, and it holds library books where people can put some in, take one out. And it essentially, it encourages literacy and sharing and community. And the park commission was enthusiastic about this idea. The proposal was to put them in some of our, our parks. And I, I worked with my staff and discussed it and worked with our park commission to identify some of the, of the potential locations. And in the memorandum, I did include those potential sites. One is not a park, but I figured City Hall might be a, a nice location to have one of these books, or boxes. But I, I would like to invite, if that's all right, to have Ms. Cameron talk about this and her idea.
Please.
Thank you. Basically, these are boxes with books. And the idea, again, to promote literacy, access to books. And my idea of the city parks was having had children go through recreation, that there aren't not only the children playing, but half a zillion little siblings running around in the parks, parents there. In our area, there's certainly, within the city, a lot of walkers, joggers who stop and look. And it's been pretty exciting at, at our site with the, with the neighborhood little boys. I am, we do have an Eagle Scout applicant with Celine Troop 446, and it is his proposal to attain Eagle Scout by taking on this project. And we will all be working together. We have the, the sites. It's up to him, Grayson Knapp, to create the, the budget, to get the materials, to include his troop members in the construction and installation of these. And we find out exactly where to put them, working with Carla. And then I am also part of the 212 Arts Center, and they, we've been keeping them updated. And at our, they meet regularly artists, professional and amateur artists. And it was proposed, I just updated them, if there was interest. And one of the individuals has her own art studio, and said, once the boxes are finished, why not bring them to the studio? And the members could come. So it would look nice. You know, they would be painted very well. And it's my proposal, as far as the Eagle Scout, it's his one shot to create the, or develop these, install these with his troop, and then he's done. And then my proposal was, well, as far as maintenance, that as a volunteer in the city, that I would take that on, unless there's some wonderful community group that wants to take that, feel free. But you would want to know that who's going to maintain these, who's going to check on them. And my proposal is that's what I would do. We would have an initial start with the Celine used library, getting some of those. And the troop would be doing their own, kind of a book drive, an internal book drive, and with other troops, to, to get the initial number of books. And then the idea is people drop them off, take them, drop them off, and it's perpetuating. So it started in Wisconsin, and it spread like, not quite wildfire, because burning, but they're very popular. They create interest, and would be something promoting arts and culture in, in the city. And I think the city parks would be a wonderful location for these.
Could I, can I say just another?
Yeah.
Please.
Quick note. I did want to make note that the, the Arts and Culture Commission was also consulted. There wasn't a quorum that day, so they did, there was no action taken. But they, there was discussion, and it was fairly positive. If I could, maybe Mr. Tahar could.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
Yes, yes. The, the, I actually raised this little question with, with Ms. Scruggs in wearing my now familiar-to-all wordsmith hat. The, the Arts and Culture Committee was very interested in this project. It was a discussion within the group, and there was a lot of positive response, but no official action was asked on our part. So the wording in the, in the memo might, might lead you to believe that. So it's just a point of clarification.
Thank you.
And, and just to, in conclusion, as you can see, this is kind of a, a community project. You know, we're involving our, some of our business owners, the Eagle Scouts, a private citizen, the parks. I think this is a really, a really neat project.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. And I am indebted to you for your, your leadership and, and commitment to seeing this come to fruition. And I think they look great. I didn't realize there's a third on Hall Street, so I'm going to have to go and check that out.
Yes.
The, the books that are contained within the, the boxes are books for all ages, correct?
They could, there, you could make a choice. My proposal, it would be a mixed adult and children.
Okay, and eclectic topics. Okay. You need to get your husband's book on the valley farm in there.
That would be a good idea.
Okay, very good. That's my suggestion. What questions are there from the dais?
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay. Ms. Tahar?
So it's a librarian question, of course. So did I understand correctly that part of the scouts portion, can self-contained part of the project is to put together the initial stock of books that will be in the, in the boxes?
Yes, that's the proposal, his proposal, that he would do an initial.
So it's not just building, but it's also filling? Not just building and installing, but also stocking?
Correct.
Okay.
He was nervous about painting, and I figured that out. But he's not an artist. So we figured that out, that the 212 Arts Center members would, would be part of that. The only question we have not specifically resolved yet is that we have the option of either being registered with the Little Free Libraries staff organization, or, like mine, just do it on our own. I'd have to call it something else. And actually, the scout came up with a nifty name. He said Books to Go, or Books on the Go, which I really liked. So we haven't, if, if anyone has a strong, I don't have a strong feeling. I think we can just go on our own. It's just being registered, and you have to pay $40 per box to be registered so everyone around the country knows where those are. I'm just throwing that out if, if the group council has a strong feeling. And I didn't know if, if you did, as far as being registered with and getting the plaque. The other ones do. The, the, the other two within the city of Celine do have, you get the plaque.
So it's $40 per box, then?
Correct. Which is not up to you folks. It was just what we would have to add to the budget, and I wasn't sure that that was needed. I mean, we have ours, and.
Is it per year, or just one time only?
One time. So I don't feel that strongly one way or the other.
Ms. Cybo Koenig, please.
I don't have super strong feelings either, though. I wonder if there isn't some value to belonging to a national sort of organization. And, you know, there are people who traveled all the Walmarts where you can camp. Maybe there are people who travel to explore Little Free Libraries in small towns, and maybe someone visiting would appreciate knowing where. And, and that website or that organization would be the place to start looking for that. So that's my, one of my thoughts.
Anything else, Mr. Rhodes?
Just a question on being that these are scattered around, are going to be in parks. Inevitably, at some point, somebody's going to do some vandalism to one of these. And the initial Eagle Scout candidate is finished with his process. He's out of the picture. Who's going to replace, repair the damaged unit?
First of all, I think that's a, it's a point to bring up. Second of all, it's when you read the articles about it, it's amazing that there is so little of that type with, with the little libraries, inner cities around the country. There, the history, the experience in the last six years is there has been so little. To answer your question, that would, I assume, be up to me, to figure out how to, how to get this repaired. Seemed like I even had another point, but I'm losing it. So I, I don't think there, there has not been experience with that. It's like, we have statues around here. We have artwork throughout the city, and I guess that could be a concern. But we're still going to put them up, I guess is my feeling. It's, we're not, I feel not being afraid. I have, we also have a statue by ours right by the street. And I don't want to be afraid of that happening, and then we don't put up community artwork. We don't put out these pieces. Point taken, but I answered. If I'm maintaining, if I'm checking on them regularly, I'd have to do something about that.
Anything else, Mr. Tahar?
Well, I would just comment, add to that. I would, I would assume that site selection within the parks would be critical. Placing them in highly visible, well, you know, that sort of thing. Spots would be a deterrent.
It is a known fact that the more people that are using our parks, using our facilities, the less vandalism that occurs. But I agree that it would blow you away, what happens.
Ladies, thank you both. Appreciate it very much. If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Cybo Koenig and seconded by Dillon to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We move on to new business item 1597. This is state historical marker. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated May the 12th, 2015, from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the request to submit the application for the Michigan Historical Marker application for our registered historic sites, and the $200 application fee.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar, seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Ms. Scruggs, would you care to comment at all?
Yeah, just briefly. Actually, I have Jim Peters, who you all are familiar with, but he's, he's been a good leader in this whole project and, and has prepared a lot of the information. And if, if you'd like to, yeah.
Over to Councilmember Peters, current Park Commissioner. We would welcome you to the day.
Please, please come up.
If you'd like to make, or to the podium, if you'd like to make a comment.
I'll make a couple, I'll make a quick couple of comments. Like I said, Mr. Peters has, has done a lot of the legwork. We've, we've actually gone to several of the commissions, the Historic District, or Historic District.
Celine Historic.
Celine Historic, help me.
Celine Historic Society.
Society, thank you. Arts and Culture Commission, the Parks Commission, we've talked with city staff about this project. This is something that is of great interest, to kind of shed some enlightenment on what Celine is and where Celine came from, and some history of Celine. Celine is extremely historic, dating back to the Paleo Indian Ages, and we've had wars, encampments around here. We've had lots of creatures like mastodons and saber-toothed tigers and whatnot. And this kind of would, would bring this to the downtown area. We've done a lot of the research to try to get a state historic marker. And in my memorandum, we do have a couple here in Celine. And I forgot to mark where they are.
The Curtis House.
The Curtis House and the Presbyterian Church has these markers currently. It is, it's a very, very long process. There's an application that has to be made, and along with an application fee. Then it is reviewed and brought back, saying, yes, we will allow you to do this. And then, I guess, Eastern Michigan University is, works with the state to create the language, the wording on these markers. And obviously, city council would have an opportunity to approve the, the wording, and then it would be created. But it's a very significant sign. And we've designated an area by parking lot number four as the proposed area. Currently, there's the, the Katrina Dog House that's, that's right there. But that's what we would be, where we would be proposing to put that. So we don't want to have it down at the park, you know, saying Salt Springs Park or anything, but, but Salt Springs as, as a designation for the Celine area.
Are you proposing that it would replace the dog house that's currently there?
No, it would be in that same general vicinity. And I, some of the technical questions, if you have any, I'm sure Mr. Peters would be happy to help.
Mr. Peters, do you care to comment at all, sir?
Parks Director Scruggs covered it pretty well, other than to say that Celine has a very interesting history due to Salt Springs. It'd be nice to share some of its history with visitors and residents. You still come across people here in town who have no idea why we're called Celine, or the history behind it. So I think it'd be a nice addition to town. It's been quite some time since we had historic marker.
Very good.
And we're not asking for any money. This has all been covered by donations and by funding from committees and commissions.
Excellent. Any question for Ms. Scruggs or Parks Commissioner Peters? No? Thank you both. Appreciate your leadership on this very much, Jim. Any subsequent discussion? Ms. Tahar?
Yes, I would, I would just say, in enthusiastically supporting this, that the Arts and Culture Committee was very taken by the presentation, by the concept. And as the committee is, is working on defining our mission and defining goals, one of our goals, or one of our areas of, that we believe is part, integral part of the arts and culture of the city of Celine is its history. So the committee is very pleased to be able to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Any additional comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Cybo Koenig, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-98. This is resolution to approve annexation of McDonald's. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the petition for annexation filed by James F. Russ Jr., Senior Counsel for McDonald's, dated April the 20th, 2015, and to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, granting the petition filed by McDonald's, annexing parcel three of land described in Exhibit A upon receipt of a certificate, copy of resolution from the Charter Township of Pittsfield, approving the release of the property from Pittsfield Township for annexation to the city, and the filing of the approving resolution with the county clerk and the Office of the Great Steel with the Secretary of State, and further, to refer the zoning of the parcel to the City Planning Commission upon completion of the annexation process. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Rhodes. Clerk Royal, do you care to go over your memorandum at all?
If anybody has any questions, this is the detention pond that is behind the parcel. And it's just one lot that is not included into the city. So they're trying to get that put in to do a new drive-through when they redo it.
And as Mr. Gearbaugh may choose to comment, this issue has been brought up and discussed at, at previous planning commission meetings. Any questions for our city clerk? Mr. Roth?
I was wondering, since we're asking for annexation there, that how about your other parcels from that township along that same section?
I, I, they usually have to come to us and ask to be annexed into the city.
Go ahead and comment.
I'm just referring, this is a reference to the church that wanted to be annexed to the city, but there's parcels in between. And they went about it with a different process.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the Keystone Church, I believe Mr. Roth you're referring to, where there's actually township properties in between, well, it's kind of surrounded on, on, what, three sides, two sides of city, but there's also a long piece of roadway that, that has a number of township properties that front on that. of roadway that, that has a number of, of township properties that front on that. So the Boundary Commission is, is the route that they sought, um, and the Boundary Commission cannot make islands, and, and if they were to grant such, for Keystone, for instance, they would create um, this, a bit, create an island, uh, with those existing um, houses and a church, another church. Um, the, this is one of the, this was, because it's just a, it's contiguous to the city, uh, would not be creating any islands, um, and this was, my understanding is, uh, years ago, um, the consideration for approval was that for any future expansion, that, that detention, that property where the detention pond is needed, needs to come in, uh, for, for, uh, for approval, and so, so what they're proposed, um, uh, the new, the new drive-through that they want to add, um, in order for approval, they need to have that, that uh, parcel annexed into the city.
Any additional comments or questions? No? Any subsequent discussion? Well, it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Rhodes, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item fifteen dash ninety-nine. This is millage rate for fiscal year sixteen General Appropriations Act, our budget. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May seventh, twenty fifteen memo from uh, City Treasurer Bennett regarding consideration of the millage for fiscal year sixteen General Appropriations Act, and to direct staff to utilize the millage rate for fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen of sixteen point two eight zero zero mills.
Move to approve.
You're just acknowledging, yeah, you're just acknowledging receipt, Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gearbaugh. Ms. Bennett, do you care to make any comments at all? This is pretty self-explanatory. Okay, very good. Uh, any questions for staff? Any comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion passes. Move on to new business item fifteen dash one hundred, proposed budget for fiscal year sixteen, uh, which would run from seven one of fifteen to six thirty of sixteen, scheduling of public hearing. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May seventh, twenty fifteen memo from Treasurer Bennett, and to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, setting the public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen on Monday, June the first, twenty fifteen, at seven thirty P.M., with public notice to be given according to law.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Cybo Koenig. Any discussion on this? Again, pretty self-explanatory. Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Cybo Koenig to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Uh, we move on now to new business item fifteen dash one oh one, resolution to authorize issuance of sanitary sewer system revenue bonds. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution to authorize the issuance of sanitary sewer system revenue bonds in the, in the sum not to exceed three million six hundred thousand for a period of not to exceed thirty years.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment on, on this issue?
This is just the um, authorization to purchase the bonds for phase two of the water treatment plan that we've been discussing over the course of the past year or so.
Correct, thank you.
Using the state revolving fund.
Very good. Um, again, we have discussed this in the past, but the chair would entertain any questions you may have at this time. Any subsequent discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dylan, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Mr. Rhodes?
Um, my uh, Parks and Environmental Commissions both meet subsequent to this meeting, so I'll report on what happened previously. Parks Commission had a cleanup at Curtis Park on May the ninth. It was well attended, not only by Parks Commissioners, but also by some citizens at large. A fair amount of effort was accomplished, even uh, between the rainstorms. We did a lot of scraping on the pavilion there, and uh, planted a fair number of daffodils, and did some other miscellaneous cleanup. The um, Environmental Commission staffed a table at the farmer's market this last Saturday, and handed out a fair amount of literature, mostly to youngsters, some of the coloring books and other things that we had received so far free of charge. So, um, that group is active also. That's my reports.
Thank you, sir. Additional commission, committee, or task force reports from council members. No, then we'll move on to reports and other announcements. Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
Um, I'm not sure if this fallen. Uh, the mayor and I met with individuals of the Celine Township to discuss the potential of Adelaide Farms and the annexation and four twenty-five agreement and so forth, and I think we had good discussions on that. I think we're all in agreement that whatever we can come up with as a reasonable agreement can be used as a template for future um, potential developments that would go forward. I think we all have the realization that growth will happen more likely in piecemeal, but not in a, a big development like Biltmore had proposed many years ago. Um, and I think what we're doing is both attempting, and I think this council will agree, is we're trying to look towards this regional approach, and also benefiting each government agency. We're not trying to take anything, and they're not um, wanting to hold out for everything else. We know that we need to work together to make this a good plan, and I think um, we're moving forward on this. So I'm, hopefully, when the additional studies and things come back, that we've authorized, that maybe this will move forward, and we can see some more additional growth.
I think you reported that perfectly. Um, the only thing that I would add is that um, there are a few little tweaks and changes that we're going to make to um, a proposed four twenty-five agreement, um, and I suspect sometime in the next couple months, Mr. Gearbaugh and I will, uh, will double back with Supervisor Marion and Trustee Marion to go over that document, um, and then bring it to our respective boards. Um, and like Councilmember Gearbaugh said, if um, if there's consensus that uh, the four twenty-five agreement that we've prepared is appropriate, then we hope that it can be used as a template um, for future annexation agreements. So, we will, we will definitely keep you in the loop as, as things transpire. Other reports and announcements. Mr. Rhodes?
Just a miscellaneous announcement, doesn't really fit anywhere, but I, I wanted to recognize a gentleman who has been covering our meetings for a while, and understand this is the last one that he will be at, Austin Smith, because he is moving on to greener pastures for himself, and I wanted to uh, thank him for his coverage of our, of our meetings.
Well, let's give him a round of applause. He actually kind of stole my thunder, but that's okay. I'm sorry. Um, I think I speak for everyone at the dais, and everyone here at the city of Celine, Austin, and I say we appreciate and we respect your, your fair and objective coverage of, of this community, and this council specifically. Um, we're sorry to lose you, but uh, we know you're going on to, to bigger and better things. It's a great opportunity.
I, I wouldn't say it's bigger, better, or greener, it's just, yeah, just moving on to something different.
Different. Well, we wish you the best. We know that you will do very well, and I do have, if you want to come forward, I do have a small little token of our appreciation to you, and we wish you well for the future. Let's give him one more round of applause. Other reports and announcements? Well, I actually have another kind of fun one. I um, I, on Friday evening, I actually felt bad, because earlier this week, I connected with um, Councilmember Rhodes to see if he had time to meet with me on Friday afternoon to discuss a whole host of issues. Um, and this is not out of character for Mr. Rhodes. He failed to acknowledge to me that it was his birthday. Um, well, I can tell you, if it was my birthday, I wouldn't have met with, with anybody to discuss municipal issues. Um, but bless his heart, um, he puts the interest of the city uh, above himself, and so he, he graciously agreed to meet with me on his birthday. Um, and so, uh, because I took time on your birthday to meet with you, I thought I'd give you a little something today. Um, and we, of course, we all wish you a happy birthday, hope you had a, a nice birthday on Friday, and many more years of, of health and happiness.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Don't eat it all in one place. Any other reports and announcements? Well, then let's move on to two items that I think our DPW director is going to discuss. Um, city sidewalks, and I think this is specifically relating to our upcoming project to do some, some grinding, um, to rectify, I think, am I mistaken, Jeff, about ninety percent of the defects in our sidewalk inventory?
Yes, it's, it'd be quite a bit of grinding. Um, a citywide program to remove the smaller trip hazards on the entire network of city sidewalks. Um, these are the, where you have one panel that tips a little bit, and it creates a little vertical edge there. Um, any of those that are less than uh, an inch and a half are eligible candidates for this grinding technique, which creates a, uh, an ADA acceptable slope, and removes that little trip hazard. Uh, so separations bigger than that are not uh, candidates for grinding, and of course, other sidewalk issues such as cracks and spalling, um, those cannot be fixed with this method. So that program, um, the um, the request for proposal for that is, is scheduled to be completed this week. We'll get that out for bids uh, next week, and um, next week, and then uh, two weeks for a bidding process, and then we can start uh, construction uh, late midsummer.
So real quick, Jeff, so that will appear as an action item before council then, probably our second meeting in June?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully second meeting in June, yeah. Um, and uh, one good thing that has happened in the interim of this whole discussion, um, is that there are a few more firms that are offering this grinding technique now. So um, there'll be uh, more, more contractors to choose from, a more competitive bidding environment. Uh, so that's, we're looking forward to that. Um, and yeah, so we had, we did the survey, we have all the locations noted. Uh, that's part, it'll be part of the, the RFP, and uh, then we'll just be able to turn this contractor loose.
Very good, okay. Well, like I said then, or like you said, rather, uh, we'll expect an, an action item to come before us, most likely then at our second meeting in, in June. Very good. Are there any questions for Jeff on this issue, or Mr. Fordice, rather? No, then uh, Mr. Fordice, why don't you also give us an update on the establishment of a community recycling location?
Um, so, I'm sure you recall when we established the new uh, curbside residential recycling program with the large carts. Uh, there was um, broad acceptance and excitement about the program. Um, I think the final figures were ninety-seven percent of the people kept their carts, um, and about three percent, for various reasons, returned their carts. Uh, this community recycling center is an effort to capture some of that three percent who um, did not hold on to their carts, and so currently don't have a recycling option. So what we've established is, uh, here in the city hall parking lot, we have uh, four of the recycling carts. Uh, just recently created a flyer, which I think you got a copy of on the table tonight. Um, is it, I don't know where mine is, but everyone else got one. Good. No, no, we're good, Mr. Fordice. I have some extras. Okay. Okay. Um, so, uh, we'll get copies of this um, over to the senior center, and I also have a list of all the addresses that returned their carts for various reasons. So I'm going to try to group those. Um, they tended to be uh, collections of um, attached condominiums where they had smaller garages and didn't feel, so I can get this information to those groups.
If I may, I, I think the, the main areas were Park Place, the condos at um, at Brecken Village.
Yep.
And I'm missing one. No, there was another, another area.
Echo Court, I think was, there were, there were a handful from Echo Court, yeah. So, um, so we'll get the word out there. There'll be a, um, an article in the next FYI. Uh, we'll get, of course, we'll get information on um, Facebook, website, and all that stuff. Um, currently, um, there, there isn't any signage out there, so that signage, uh, will be ordered this week to label that as a community recycling center. There'll be a copy of these acceptable material rules there.
But we are able to take recyclables?
You can take them there right now.
Immediately, okay.
Yeah.
I want to be able to announce this at the senior center on Wednesday, so.
Thank you. Take these.
Beautiful. Um, any questions for Mr. Fordice regarding the um, community recycling station? No? Okay, very good. Appreciate your leadership on this. Glad this was able to come together. Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
I just noticed, I was attempting to go to www.bceline.com, and that didn't bring up something. Is that supposed to be our, still our current?
Be Celine, the marketing website that would have been created back in two thousand nine.
No, this says www.bceline.com, so is that still a valid website?
Uh, yes and no. Um.
Because I didn't, when I brought it up a couple days ago, it just was blank, and it didn't redirect anywhere.
Right. Uh, is, and I'm working with um, Mr. Shonk, uh, but the, the, the software platform that, that is built on is well out of date, and so we're working to try and, and move forward. However, the consideration, you may recall, from the, the CTAB grant, working with, with the Chamber, uh, Celine Chamber of Commerce, on the, the uh, Visit Celine site that is being worked on currently, um, the thought, you may recall the discussion, is the thought that the high probability that, that may transition from Be Celine to the Visit Celine site, um, because that would serve the purpose of Be Celine plus more. Um, so, um, that's my answer, and that's, so that's why it's difficult. I mean, we, we, we do, as staff, uh, we do attempt to update it, but it has recently become difficult to do that because of the software issue, and so we're, um, uh, Mr. Shonk is working on giving me a proposal to say this is what it would take in resources, whatever that be, time, or money, or whatever it might be, so we can evaluate and make that decision.
That's funny. I just, that, we probably should take it off the flyer.
Yeah.
It's going to be my suggestion, that as long as it's not functioning, it should be removed from, from promotional material.
And maybe, and, and working with, with Mr. Fordice, maybe it might be um, uh, a better spot on the, the Celine B Green site, maybe.
Yeah.
Is it, okay.
Websites all over.
I guess it is.
There are.
So maybe we just remove Be Celine.
Anything else on this issue? No, then our last discussion item this evening is downtown parking enforcement. As you may recall, um, at the end of twenty fourteen, when we decided to um, begin um, enforcement of parking downtown effective January one, we made a, a verbal commitment to our business owners and to our residents that we would um, review our policy on June the first. So I'm just reminding you all of that. Um, and actually, this is an item that Mr. Rhodes and I spoke briefly about on Friday. Um, I actually believe what would be best is if we had a shorter work meeting on this subject on June the first, um, probably beginning at six thirty, possibly six forty-five, um, for staff to, to share their comments and thoughts. Um, there's some data that I requested. Um, I would like to um, have the number of tickets broken down per lot, per month. Um, I'm also curious to learn how many of the long-term passes were purchased, um, in each one of the months, uh, since we began enforcement. Um, and I also think that there's value in having a work meeting on this issue. One, because it's a little bit more casual, and, and we can have more of a dialogue and discussion, but it would also afford um, our constituents, our residents, our business owners, the opportunity to attend and participate and comment on this issue. Um, and I guess my prerogative would be to follow a very similar approach to what we uh, utilized for the weight restriction on South Ann Arbor Street, which would be to have a, a work meeting on this issue, discuss it, then bring it back as a discussion item at the subsequent motion, and develop consensus, other, uh, uh, develop consensus as to whether or not we want to continue the, the current policy, the status quo, make some adjustment, adjustments, or cease enforcement. So, uh, I'm curious as to, to what other council members think about this issue. Mr. Rhodes?
Um, I, I concur with um, what Mayor said. Uh, we have, we have an obligation to review our parking enforcement, um, as we stated that we would in June, to make sure that whatever it is that we do is the best that we can do, given the resources that we have, and the demands that we have on our parking.
Anybody have any objection to having a six thirty work meeting on June the first?
Nope, I think that's a good way to go.
Okay. Ms. Har, you're okay with that?
That's good, yes.
Mr. Roth?
Okay with it.
Ms. Dillon?
I'm fine.
Okay. Um, besides the information that I have requested, which is a breakdown of how many tickets were issued each month in each one of the lots, and the number of long-term passes that were purchased, what other data would, would council members like? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Number, number of hours officers are actually doing policing.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Har?
Um, if it's available, the, if there's a breakdown by time period when tickets are issued, more frequently at one time of the day versus another.
Okay. Possible, Chief? Look into it.
May, okay.
Okay. Ms. Dillon?
How many tickets have been paid?
Okay, that's, that can be, that information can be gathered. Can it not, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, well, if you think of, of any additional data points that, that you would require, please uh, direct those comments to, to Mr. Campbell. Um, but again, um, and actually, evidently, can you make sure to make contact with, with Riley at, at Celine Main Street, and he can let uh, his members know that we'll be discussing this issue at six thirty on June the first?
Sure.
Mayor, one other thing?
Please.
Not necessarily naming the names, but if individuals have received more than one ticket?
Can that information be gathered? If a particular vehicle has If a particular vehicle has received?
I may be able to give you what vehicle has received it tonight, but might quickly tell you the person.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. I'm just saying that, I'm just curious to see if multiple people have received multiple tickets.
Mr. Rhodes?
And I believe that our city manager is already gathering up the information about the available parking spaces that we have, and so that should be in the packet also.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. So, six thirty then on June the first, we'll be discussing downtown parking. Okay? Anything further on that issue? Mr. Har?
Have we already said which parking lots, frequency of violations by parking lot?
Yeah, I wanted it broken down by month and by parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Again, if you have anything further on that particular issue, please direct your comments, questions to the city manager. Anything else to be brought up as a discussion item this evening? No, then we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, so many people ask me why I come and waste my three minutes telling my concerns. It's because I served with Mr. Beach and Mr. Anderson, and citizens' comments were very important. On the U.S. twelve re-annual or refurbishing, I was wondering if we can also request some help on our police costs, because there will be definitely an increase in burden on the police department with the turns and the stops and everything. And I figure if we can accept rejection, we can ask anything. Then on the Tifa, which is handling the possible two hundred and fifty stage or whatever, I guess I'm disappointed that with over a half million dollar budget, there still are five vacancies, or, no, I'm sorry, there were four absences and a vacancy, same as it was last year. And I would think the people that are serving would want to sit on something with such a large budget. The other thing I'm requesting, is it going to be handed out my concerns of the ordinances that have not been adhered to? I think that's a yes or no, or I will pay to have copies and disperse them again to all the council.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional public comments? Any correspondence that you supplied to the city manager? Mrs. Hess will be forwarded to each council member. And I think this goes without saying, and I think our track record proves this, that we take public comments very seriously, and we greatly appreciate everybody who takes time out of their schedule to attend and participate in our council meetings. Any other business to come before the city council this evening? No, then please note that we do have a work meeting on June the first at six thirty to discuss downtown parking, a regular meeting at seven thirty, and then a regular meeting on June the fifteenth at seven thirty P.M. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that. So, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-three P.M.
So, moved.
Thank you. Mr. Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Eight fifty-three.
Eight, I'm sorry. Even better. Okay. Eight fifty-three. My apologies. It's been moved by Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.